Good evening, Chairwoman.
Good evening.
We have six members present here.
We have five here, plus Brian Macy from the City of Indio, who is not sworn in yet.
Okay.
So are you ready to proceed?
Are you ready to proceed, Mr. Ross? Mr. Ross is here, and he is ready to proceed as well.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
We're going to call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Energy Consumers Advisory Committee for this Tuesday, November 12, 2013. We're going to start with "Call to Order," and we will have a Pledge of Allegiance this evening, so if everyone would please stand and join me.
My pledge.
My pledge, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Or somebody, would you like to proceed with the roll call?
Yes, thank you, Chairwoman. Okay, I will call your name. Does everybody have their microphone on? All right, Mr. Larson. Mr. Abadi. Mr. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Higginbottom.
Here.
Mr. Gouna.
Here.
Mr. Nunez. Mr. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Bumberra.
Here.
Ms. Gomez.
Present.
Mr. Anderson. Mr. Osborne. Mr. Weber. Mr. McNicky. Mr. Garcia. Chairwoman Lupi Ramos-Watson.
Present.
Becky Browton.
Present.
Ms. Celia.
Present.
Mr. Bayard.
Present.
And Mr. Gibson.
Present.
Okay, we have 11.
Well, there's no.
Oh, Mr. Anderson just walked in. Thank you.
We're going to move on to item number two, Public Comment Period. This is the time set aside for any member of the audience wishing to address the committee to please step forward. We have a podium and a microphone up toward the front of the room. If you'd please make yourself known at this time. There is no one stepping forward in La Quinta. How about in Imperial County?
No one stepping forward in Imperial County.
Thank you, Vice Chairwoman. We will close the public comment period and move on to item three, Session Objectives. We have a complete packet for us this evening. Legal counsel, Mr. Simmons, will be going over various items that govern this committee, such as the bylaws, rules of order, ethics, transparency, and the law in public service. And really, the objective here tonight is to respond to some of the questions and comments that have been made in recent meetings, so that we can all be on the same page and have a general understanding of our purpose, our goal, our mission, how we function as a committee, and how we work together to move forward the Imperial Irrigation District's Energy Division for our consumers. So I'll start out by reading the general purpose of the bylaw, which is, "This committee is organized to provide advice and recommendations to the Board of Directors of the Imperial Irrigation District, the Board, concerning certain issues to be addressed by the Board regarding fiscal, strategic planning, and IID Board policy matters, to the extent such matters affect the Energy Department." And I'd also like to kind of give a historical overview, if Gil Perez will help me. This committee has been in existence many years, but as far as the current constitution, where there are 10 members from Imperial County and 10 members from Riverside County, is a fairly new composition. I don't recall if it's been six or eight years that we have been under this form, but the Coachella Valley Representatives are fairly new to this process. The Imperial County Representatives are the ones that have historically worked with the governing board to take a look at energy consumer matters. So I only have the perspective from six or eight years ago to today, which is where we all work together to review annual goals, annual fiscal policies, and strategic planning for both areas, together, combined. Gil, I'm going to call on you to kind of give a historical perspective of how the ECAC has worked historically, and how we've evolved, and how it is now with both counties represented versus how we used to function before with just Imperial County.
Well, before, well, this committee was started in 1994, I believe, and at that time, we didn't have, prior to '94, we didn't have anything. I attended a meeting of the Water Advisory Board, and I asked one of the board members later, I said, "Why come we don't have one?" And he says, "Well, just make a request," which I did, and then we were formed. And our purpose is to advise the Board on items on electrical energy. And at that time, it was decided that we would have members from both valleys, Coachella Valley and Imperial Valley. It was almost split in half, like it is today, except at that time, we had all members appointed by the Board. Now, in the last five years, I believe, we have the cities appointing their members to the committee. And it's basically the same, other than the appointment, the appointment, and now the Board doesn't appoint anybody from the Imperial Valley, I mean, not Coachella Valley, but they still do here in the Imperial Valley, which is kind of nice, because they represent the community. You do too, except that you're based on geographical areas. We're based valleywide. And so basically, the committee is the same. Our purpose is still the same, other than the appointments. The cities are the ones that are appointing the members in the Coachella Valley. We're over here, as I mentioned, it's the Board that appoints its members here. And that's basically it.
Okay, and just for clarification, here in the Coachella Valley, each of us representative on the committee is appointed by a municipality. All of the municipalities that are serviced by the Imperial Irrigation District have either one or two appointments available to them. So some of the municipalities have chosen to bring forward representatives that are involved with the municipality, either at the elected level or at the management level, so that we can bring forward to the Imperial Irrigation District not only some of the concerns that we have with existing electrical infrastructure, but also to help Imperial Irrigation District understand the future planning, because we, the municipalities, kind of have a bird's eye view of what's to come in years coming up, so we can help IID prepare and plan for that. And in return, we turn around and report back to our municipalities and disseminate that information to all of the energy consumers. So it's just a different vehicle or a different path that we take, but at the end of the day, we still are a conduit for the end consumer, either to voice their concerns or to relay information back to our respective communities. So even though we're appointed in a different fashion, we still have the same purpose, which is to represent the energy consumers district-wide. So I just kind of wanted to give that historical perspective, so that we all kind of understand how we grew to be where we are today. And from this point, I'd like to go ahead and move on to item number four, where Mr. Simmons will begin by going through the bylaws and rules of order.
That was the most interesting part of the whole program. So are there any questions? Sort of, we could sort of wrap it up now. Thank you both. I wish I would have talked to you before the program. It would have made my job probably a little easier. I had this nightmare that I had to give a presentation to a group of people, to a room full of people, where everybody knew more than I did. And then I woke up this morning, and it turns out it wasn't a nightmare, it was just preparing. So I appreciate very much being asked to participate in this. I say that sort of tongue-in-cheek, but there is obviously great truth in that. You folks have been going to the meetings, you've been volunteering, giving of your time to participate in this. I'm an interim general counsel, which means I came in to help out, and eventually I will leave when my helping out is done. And so I guess I would say that I'm pleased to be able to help out today. But take it for what it is and what it's worth. I do have some experience in the broader scheme of advisory committees and boards outside of this context, but certainly, I don't necessarily have, I don't have any of the ECAC-specific experience that we've seen, we've already heard today. So please interject, please correct, please ask questions as we go forward. My only rule is that don't ask me questions I don't know the answers to. That's not exactly true. I reserve the right to come back and supplement my answers as we go forward. So let me take it outside of that broader sort of macro view. As Mr. Perez was making reference to, there is a water counterpart to advisory committee. We all sort of have this tendency to stay within our scope and our knowledge base, and actually, advisory committees are relatively commonplace, I suspect, up in the Coachella Valley, since a lot of you are coming out of a municipal environment. You probably are more familiar, equally familiar, the fact that a lot of those municipalities have other advisory boards and advisory committees similar to this. And so there is, this is a path well-worn, as it relates to sort of municipal governance. So speaking to advisory boards generally, they're made up of voluntary, it's a voluntary citizen advisory group, and that's sort of a constituency, that body, which is what we are, is what is really an integral part of our local political scheme, at least in the state of California, and actually, you'll see nationwide. Advisory boards are a way for the government to engage its citizens and ensure their participation and to get feedback. Its primary purpose is to get that citizen's, that citizen perspective in the context of government. And really, what the, what a governing body, here the Board of Directors is intending, is that there is a level of analysis that's deeper at the citizen level, not just the constituents stating their various claims, but a body that analyzes, discusses, and formulates well-developed opinions, thoughtful recommendations, premised upon the constituency they represent. So I commend all of you. It's certainly a civic sort of right, and it's a civic responsibility of participation, and you're satisfying that. Not everybody will, and I respect that. The citizens without this group would not otherwise be heard. We've always already heard the different reasons why we're here. Some of us represent all the valleys, and we're actually appointed to this committee by the directors. Other ones are appointed by municipal, by different municipalities. And there's all kinds of reasons one would want to join here, and I'll leave those, I have a list of them, but you folks are here for your own reasons, so I'll leave those. One of the most important things, and I think this is something to take away from this, to take away from the orientation generally, is we, as the IID, need to provide you with autonomy. So of course, we are to turn you loose, to set some level of your own scope, some level of your responsibilities, make your own decisions, make your own recommendations, create a work plan that suits you, develop guidelines and rules and procedures by which to govern your work. All of that with the big caveat, subject approval of the Board of Directors. Now, the Board of Directors can't be here and look and watch and oversee everything that's happening, but what they've done is they've given us the bylaws, which we'll delve into in a few moments. But that element of autonomy, apart from the bylaws, is extraordinarily important. Even the bylaws are things that we can change, should we feel the need to, provided we get them approved by the Board of Directors. We're speaking of the Imperial Irrigation District in a pretty exciting time, apart from all the other reasons why you would want to be civic-minded and engaged in the Imperial Irrigation District. We just have completed this, what's by all accounts is a relatively significant energy reorganization in the department, or maybe you'd say we're not quite finished, but we're working on it, which is something that this department definitely needs input from, the citizens and the constituents to go through. There's been various discussions, and I know it's going to be talked about a lot more, about the new transmission strategy that's coming forward. That's really exciting, and we need some input on that. You've been anywhere in the valley, you've noticed that there's this explosive growth in solar energy generation. Five years ago, in the same places, I don't think you saw what you see now. And that's incredible. And then, of course, on the horizon, if not right around the corner, is what we think of as the Salt and Sea Initiative. I mean, between solar development and the geothermal potential at the Salt and Sea, I think that we're probably, I think we could easily say that we're going to become the greatest single-source renewable energy in the country, if not beyond, well beyond the country. And you're in the middle of it, giving the Board of Directors guidance. The IID, certainly my marching orders, as long as I've been here, is that the IID is intended to be a consumer-oriented organization. It's a public agency, its board is elected, and the staff serves the board. And you don't have to go to many board meetings to see that the staff is here, serving the board. The board's elected by the people we serve, to ensure that we're doing it correctly. And we're answering, answerable to the consumer. Now, in preparation for that, staff collaborates, collaborates with the community. There's different levels of collaboration. Obviously, we're getting input all the time from the community. You also are aware of stakeholder meetings. Stakeholder meetings involve vendors, involve the actual consumers, in the, to make sure that we're answering all of the issues that are arising before we take it to the board, because unless it's been thoroughly vetted at all levels, then whatever we're giving the board's incomplete. And then, of course, this next level is the advisory panels, which thankfully, is this, on the energy side, it's this organization, on the water side, it's the WCAB, to do a second level, a better level, a more detailed analysis of these issues that come before the board. And then finally, it goes to the board. It's a collaboration. All of us have to work together, and we can't function effectively without everybody working together, working together to get to that last stage, that last stage being a presentation to an elected Board of Directors, to do what we elected them to do and to make those decisions. So having sort of trickled down through the advisory boards and through the IID, we come to this, the ECAC. And what is it? What I have before me is the bylaws. And just as a background piece, I come out of the corporate environment, so bylaws are not sort of unique or revolutionary to advisory boards. Bylaws are what govern entities. They're the rules, they're the script we follow. And so even though I don't have the experience at the ECAC that many of you do, if not all of you do, what I do have is this experience in bylaws, and I know that as I read through the bylaws, juxtaposed with, of course, this idea of advisory boards, the ECAC, this is what it is. It's advisory. It advises the board. It's a committee. This is something that I caution the directors about with some frequency. Operating as a committee, we can collaborate, move forward. Operating individually is when we start getting exposed. We're not protected by the committee anymore. Many times, you may have actually hear me at the meetings, make sure to say, "Would you call for a motion?" Because I don't want a director operating independent of the IID, I want the IID board moving together. That's what the electorate has asked for, is a Board of Directors. So too, the ECAC has to remember that that's their charge, that the ECAC has to operate as a body and come before the board as a committee. And you can see this, as we get through the bylaws and start going through it, we'll see that in different contexts. This is not to say that you leave your rights at the door. Certainly, at board meetings and here and everywhere, you have the right to be an energy consumer in Imperial and Coachella Valleys. You have the right to speak before the board whenever you want about whatever you'd like, so long as you understand that those are your individual rights that coexist with the ECAC, but we certainly don't want to suppress those in any way whatsoever. What does the ECA not? It's not a standalone representative of the IID. Again, this is where we start getting concerned about whether we operate as a committee or individuals. It's not necessarily supervisory. The only thing, the best way I could do to compare this to, because I don't want you to feel like somehow I'm slighting the ECAC in any sense whatsoever. You guys have my job. All I do is I give advice to the IID that they immediately ignore. I don't know, that's not fair. You don't ignore everything I say, just most of what I say. But I suspect that the ECAC has taken votes before, and then it gets to the board, and the board goes a different direction, and you're left scratching your head going, "Why am I here?" Well, you're a part of that decision process. Just as a lawyer, I am. I can't leave today and then say, "Here's the position of the Imperial Irrigation District. I'm the general counsel." That's not my task, that's not my charge. I can't speak to what the position of the IID is. My job is advisory. My job is to give the best advice I can and to cross my fingers and hope somebody cares about the issues the same way that I care about them. I say that facetiously. My job is to let the board go into the topic with their eyes open and to make the best decision that they, as a board, can make. They were elected, I wasn't. That's the difference. It's relatively important to accept that kind of a scope, and it's a little bit different than, I think, other contexts. Because if we're collaborating within that scope, with an understanding of what that scope is, we can do it very effectively, not taking things too personal, understanding our charge and doing it very well. I talked a little bit about this risk of going alone, and I have it here. If we, as ECAC members, get frustrated, dealing in this sort of an awkward environment, just like I get frustrated when my advice isn't taken, and we start operating out of scope, again, we start falling outside of the IID umbrella. And I say that, I'm a lawyer, so I have to say the downsides. The downside of stepping outside of the IID umbrella is we start losing our right to potentially indemnification from the IID. We start stepping outside of insurance policies from the IID. So that's why, when we, as we go through the bylaws, be keeping this in mind, that this is the script, this is the playbook, as it were, and we have to follow this playbook, whether we like it or not, as frustrating it may be, on a day-to-day basis, so that we can stay within this IID umbrella. Not only is that an effective way, like I say, by means of collaboration, but it's also the very nature of the advisory, of an advisory panel. Okay, moving on. Good, the bylaws are already on the screen. We've already talked about it, the mission, this mission statement. We've got, "The purpose is to provide advice and recommendations to the Board of Directors." This is all, this is the playbook, this is everything I've got. Provide recommendations to the Board of Directors concerning, and then I'd say, point two is, "Issues to be addressed by the Board regarding fiscal, strategic planning, and policy, to the extent they affect the Energy Department." Advice and recommendations, issues that are going to the Board, fiscal, strategic, planning, and policy matters. That's it. That's all we have to do. Okay, let's move on to Article Two, Appointments. I'm not going to go into great detail. The thing about the bylaws is, you've all read them, and this set of bylaws has actually been written quite well. It's quite clear. A few issues crop up here and there, but the appointment section is very clear as to where people come from and why we're here. I think that echoed the discussion we had earlier in the presentation. I will point out, Section 2.02, we've been, let's see, Directors, no, I'm sorry, 2.03. I wanted to just sort of point out Ms. Gonzalez's charge here. She's been very helpful, coordinating with me, making sure that I was meeting my deadlines, getting in touch with me, coordinating with you folks, and bringing us together, and that is her job, and I appreciate the fact that she did it so well in this, in preparation for this presentation. It also talks about the terms of, terms of your service and attendance requirement. Now, if there's any questions in there, I don't, I don't think that there's a lot of ambiguity. I'm sure it's a thing of historical note. Yeah, go ahead, please.
On 2.02, and maybe Gil can weigh on this, see if I can explain what I'm trying to articulate. On 2.02, it says that the advisory committee is made up of energy consumers. And my question to you is, do you think it's healthy for this body to have elected officials on it, that perhaps, in dealing with their own constituents, that the directors also represent within their jurisdictions, might have a chilling effect, if I may use the word, on some of the decisions or influences within the jurisdiction of the Imperial Irrigation District, as opposed to us, you know, the body as a, because the committee is an advisory group, being just your consumer, instead of, you know, a bunch of elected officials that are answering to another level of elected officials? Do you think that's healthy?
Well, I mean, you know, healthy is a relative term. At some point, the Board decided that this was something that made sense to them at that time. I will say this, I mean, and I can't speak, as you said, as you've observed, it might be that Mr. Perez can speak more as to where that was derived from than I can, but ultimately, in an advisory group, Mr. Han, is what you would want is the best cross-section that you could come up with. If I could figure out a way, for instance, to effectively create seats that came from, let's say, different classes, socioeconomic classes, that would be ideal. And you could go on and on, different, maybe, maybe male issues are different from female or whatever. I think if you could, if you could come up with the perfect constituency, the better. Now, I think that part of the rationale for, I think that you're referring to Coachella Valley in particular, or just generally, anybody coming out of a municipality? Yeah, and I think part of the rationale for that is, is because that they have, that is their form of representation, and we need that insight from those municipalities. It's a different constituency, perhaps, than a pure consumer, but they bring to the table different ideas and different concepts, which why, which is why we're acting as a committee and trying to get as many different forms of input that, at the time this was written and approved by the Board... and approved by the board, they thought was deserving of attention. I don't know if that answers your question. I mean, is it healthy? I don't know that it's, I don't have a problem with it generally. It seems to me that Coachella Valley, Imperial Valley, everybody has to speak to these issues. And to the extent that this is a voice for that group, well, then it could be very healthy.
And maybe, I gave another example. We have elected officials, and perhaps if the three representatives from the county were the county board of supervisors, or the representatives that the board appointed locally here were from the county board of supervisors, then, you know, history tells us that there's conflicts there, and we just got through settling. So I kind of, you know, I just was wondering if that was the intent when they wrote this, or was the intent to just have, you know, your consumers from, that they appoint them, but necessarily don't appoint, you know, themselves, or would be like forced to appoint the highest-ranking one in order to have some influence.
Madam Chairman, I want to respond to that comment. When this committee was first started, the purpose of the committee was to represent the public in general. And the board at that time made the decision, with some of our input from some of our members that are no longer here, but Shorty Higginbottom was here at the time, I think, is not to appoint political, members of political chairs, such as the board of supervisors or any other, because they have their own agenda, and they wanted a broad scope or coverage instead of a certain political body's opinion. Because we're representing the public in general, the consumers, not necessarily the board of supervisors, or in this case, well, before the Coachella Valley came in board, a political city. So we felt that at that time, it was better to just appoint public of general, general public members, not members that were a part of a political organization, such as a city, county, or sheriff, or whatever it may be. And it has served very well. Originally, the committee was from, the appointments from the Coachella Valley were basically common, ordinary consumers. They were not part of the cities or anything like that, and unfortunately, at times, they did have difficulty getting people to volunteer, because it takes quite a bit of your time and effort, especially at the very beginning. There were very heated discussions over rate increases, and they still are heated discussions when it comes to raising rates. But we wanted to represent the public in general, the consumers in general, not necessarily a political body. And it has served well so far. The Coachella Valley now, they're appointed by political bodies. And we here, and I speak for myself now, I'm concerned sometimes, because they're looking at the problem from their perspective, which is a political body or a political area, such as a city or a county, as maybe for some of the members. Where here, we're still representing everybody in general, not necessarily Central or Sealy or Brawley. We look at it at everybody. For example, I'm a member of a tax group, and we're concerned about keeping our taxes down. And when they talk about raising taxes or anything which is part of the overall rate, the base rate, you get a lot of concern from the people, which we want the board to hear. And they may not hear it, because people don't go and approach you, hey, what are you doing with this or that? They come to us, because they know that we have nothing to talk back about them, except to hear them and then pass on the word to our board of directors. And that's why I get concerned at times that the board receives these comments, and like myself and Mr. Higginbottom, who've been here a long time, we pass on those things, and we're concerned when it comes to dealing with a base rate especially, because that in itself is a tax. It depends on how you look at it. Even though it is, what do you call it, implemented by the board, board of directors, many people see that as a tax. Because when you go out and change the base rate, that has to go out to the general public. They can't just say, we're going to raise the base rate. If they could have done that, they would have done it a long time ago. But they have to be careful, because when they put it out, we're going to be out there passing on the word what's going on and saying, this board of directors wants to increase your rates, and that's what happened originally. And it didn't go through. It did the year before. They increased it by 3.5%. That was the last time it came to effect. They haven't done it since 1994.
Which is remarkable.
Yes, it is. But you see, in all public agencies, including the IID, there's a lot of, I shouldn't call it waste, you know, there's a place where they can become more efficient. And public agencies are not known for being very efficient. They take the easy route, increase the rate, tax the people. The state of California is very good at that, but when it comes to telling them, hey, why don't you cut down this committee, that committee, or do this, become more efficient, watch out, you know, because some of those committees at the state level are paid positions, even though they don't tell you. But here at the local level, most of them are advisory, or one way or the other, but we want the board to know that when they start dealing with the base rate, we want to make sure that it goes to the general public. Otherwise, we have a battle in our hands.
And I'm not sure if that relates, if your comment is that those representatives may not get it to the general public because they're from municipals?
Well, let me put it this way. A lot of people don't communicate with city councils or board of supervisors. They may communicate with me, or Mr. Higginbottom, or some of our members, because we're among them, because they know we're not elected, you know, and we're not out there shaking their hand to get something out of them, a vote, you know?
Right. And let me put it in a different perspective. If you're the board of directors of the IID and you want input, how do you go about doing that? And when they started in 94, they started doing it this way, and then they've changed it, and I think this is the latest integration, and it's different than what they've done before, trying to get input from consumers. Consumers from Imperial Valley, consumers from Coachella Valley, some consumer, and maybe some of them will be end-users, some will be municipalities, that you'd like to think would, in fact, be representing the constituents within that community by virtue of the politicians? Maybe, maybe not. And let me go further than that, because it's not, you may be able to recast it. Well, what you should have done was, you should have had 20 people and called them this, or came from this place. But we have this group that is what it is, because we think that this is a way to approach vetting at its best, trying to get input, geographic input, different input from end-users versus municipalities. Input is what we're after. And don't forget, we'll get down to Section 5.07, where we talk about the work product that this committee gives to the board. And the issue with that is, is the board doesn't only want to hear, well, yes or no? With the ECAC, they pass it or they not pass it? Ultimately, although it's a difficult challenge based upon the timing and the magnitude of some of these issues, but ultimately, what the board asked for when they were drafting these bylaws is, tell us the majority position, and if the minority position is a significant minority, and if they'd like to communicate it to the board, the board wants to hear it. So this is, like I say, it's not to say that, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down. This is a process, this is an advisory committee, to say that based upon our 20 constituents, this was the outcome, and then this was the minority position. So if you saw a minority position, let's say, that was all, you know, maybe the municipals came out on the majority, and then the individuals came out in the minority, that would be a telling fact, I think, in the ultimate how that vote came out. So it's an advisory committee? I don't know that you could say that it's the perfect constituency. It certainly is the board taking its best run at it, trying to maximize the input that it gets from its various constituents and the various communities within its jurisdiction. I think that's all I want to say about that. So I can't say that it's, you know, I think that the terms we use were healthy, whether it's productive, is it appropriate? I don't know that you can really label it. I think that what we have to do is maximize its efficiency as best we can, given what we have. And to the extent we find out, maybe anecdotally, maybe statistically, that in practice, it could be improved, then our charge at IID, your charge maybe at ECAC, is to raise the issue, and you've done a nice job, honestly, to sort of question yourselves and say, hey, is this the best we can be? And then it's going to be IID's maturity to say, you know what, yeah, let's change it, because we think we can be better. That would be my only take on it. So that's Section Two, we talked about. I did want to point out that, let's actually go to the end of Section Two, if we would. I can't, no, keep going to the next page. There's one section in here, and I don't want to everybody worked out, but this is, as attorney for IID, it's the end of 2.05. It says, "By vote of majority of remaining members, the committee may recommend to the respective director, city council, or city supervisor, the removal of a member for cause." Interestingly enough, I can say this, because I didn't write this, I don't see really anything in here that says a member can be removed for cause, but this certainly implies that that can happen. And so I point that out. I don't know, as a committee acting, I don't know when or why you would ever have occasion to take a vote on one of your fellow members. I'll leave that to you, you folks, to work out. We talked about giving you autonomy. Good luck with that decision. I do note that I'm counsel for the IID, and I think that by virtue of that language, to the extent, I certainly would, I'm here to counsel the ECAC as a committee and you guys, you folks individually, but to the extent that we ended up having some problems, I think that would be a place where that would be the authority for directors. So do communicate with your directors and communicate with your municipalities, and stay in touch with them, because it's, by virtue of that language, it sounds to me like directors, city council supervisors are also vested with the ability to remove their members for cause as well.
Let me respond to your commentary.
Sure.
The reason it was put in there is because when people are appointed, you assume they're going to be present most of the time. But sometimes, the board members that appoint them do not know that they're not attending the meetings. So it's up to us to let them know, one way or the other, either get them here or appoint somebody else. And as a group, we can take a vote and say, we're going to recommend to the board to take them off or put somebody else. That's the purpose of that.
So it's primarily about attendance? It's primarily for attendance purposes?
Right. Because everybody has their own opinion.
Sure.
And as long as you, when you go before the board and say, if I have my own opinion, but I'm not representing anybody other than myself, or a group of citizens, not a member of this committee, you can do that. And if they could do it, they would kick me off and say, we don't like the way you're representing yourself, you know? And this has happened. I've been there. But it wasn't for that purpose, it was for attendance mostly.
I appreciate, and I think that that's, I'm glad it's there for that very purpose, is to ensure that there is active, a committee is only as active as its, you know, as its members, and so I think it's an important provision. I have, Article Three talks about meetings. You folks have been meeting, open meetings, quorum. I don't know if there's any questions about that, we can answer them, but I know, they read fine to me. And I don't have anything necessarily to add at Article Four either. Article, or Section Five, Article Five, the budget. Good luck. This is a difficult time, or it's an exciting time, looking at budgetary issues, and this is... Yes, please.
Article Three, number G8, and your tax, well, you attach that policy, that the policy...
Right. Oh, I'm glad you said...
Would you please repeat the question? The microphone was off.
Did you say 3.08 or 3.09?
3.09.
Okay.
Would you please repeat the question? The microphone was off.
In Section 3.09, Policy Number G8, of which is attached to, and that policy talks about that, that this body really does not have to follow the Roberts Rules of Order. But yet, in another section, it says that we do. Because another thing refers to us following the Brown Act and sort of the thing, which that in itself refers to Roberts Rules of Order. So my question, I guess, is, do we or don't we follow the Roberts Rules of Order in this body?
Well, while we're talking about it, let's talk about that. Section 3.09 of the bylaws talks about the rules of governing meetings, and if you go to, as you said, it's attached...
First, last sentence, first paragraph, or it'll be the second paragraph.
Right. That the board does not conduct its meetings under Roberts Rules of Order, is that what you're referring to? Yes. And that is true. And the board does not, and the expectation is that the ACAC is not required to. Now, when you talk about Roberts Rules of Order, definitely the meetings are conducted by way of parliamentary procedure. And I will say that reference is made with frequency to Roberts Rules of Order. Roberts Rules of Order, 700-page volume, is, the thought is that it's overwhelming. And I don't know, I certainly don't know it front to back, and I would hate to be the parliamentarian for your group if you chose to follow it verbatim. So although there is this disclaimer that they don't follow Roberts Rules of Order because they don't want perhaps somebody to stand up in the back and say, you know, point of order, and refer to an obscure term in Roberts Rules of Order, it's patterned, there's no question that the meetings run as patterned by Roberts Rules of Order. So there's an element of ambiguity in the sense that we follow Roberts Rules of Order in concept, but not literally, if that answers the question. Yeah, I think actually the boards, which is why I attached it, the board policy does what I believe to be a nice job of talking about, no, don't take us literally about Roberts Rules of Order, because we could spend an hour trying to figure out what the rule of order is that is governing what we're trying to do in five minutes. So it does a nice job of going on and saying that, you know, what we're trying to do is how to raise a point, that if a motion is made, it should be followed through until it either is passed or it fails, except for secondary motions. So it does a nice job of, at least from a summary standpoint, talking about, conducting meetings like this, generally like Roberts Rules of Order. But if there is any ambiguity, Mr. Han, and the answer is, is that, no, we do not literally follow Robert Rules of Order, either at the board level, nor is that the expectation of the ECAC. That's good. That means that we won't... That means that we won't get a filibuster or anything, we'll be here all night because of some obscure point associated with those procedures. As it related, I have a point that I just wanted to, you know, if we do have procedural issues, and I'm not sure that we ever would, but if we did have a procedural issue, that's, it's not necessarily listed, although it's generally referred to, the term is point of order. So if you ever have a problem with what the chairwoman is doing at any given time, or you think we're not following the rules, or we're not staying with the motion and moving things through, feel free to raise the issue by saying point of order, in which case the chairwoman will respond, and she'll say, what is, state your point of order, and then it can be discussed. And it might even be that that point of order, depending on whether or not it's in dispute, would be voted upon by the entire ECAC in attendance at that time. So other than that, one would like to think Roberts Rules of Order, any parliamentary procedure is designed to help rather than hinder. And so if we approach these issues with just a commonsensical, intuitive kind of cooperative sense, and it's well-led by the chairwoman, as this committee certainly is, I think that she'll get through them without getting too entangled in the weeds on literally Roberts Rules of Order. So thank you for raising that. Again, I talked, Article 4, I'm not necessarily going through these item by item unless people have questions, but are there any questions about Article 4 in particular? I have a note to myself where the agenda is approved by the energy manager and general Article 5, dealing with budgets.
Question there?
Please.
And I guess that would be to the energy manager, since he's here. The agenda items, has that been delegated from the general manager to the energy manager?
It says here, manager or general manager. Generally, if I'm not here, then the general manager. Yes, it's one of my...
Mr. Stills, they can't hear you. Yeah, we can't hear anything.
Yes, my apologies. The bylaws state the energy manager or the general manager will approve. And the general manager generally will only approve if I'm not here. So it really comes to me as a primary responsibility, and if I'm not here, it goes to the GM.
Are there any other questions about that? Okay. I'm going to, my next provision that I will speak to is 5.04. Does anybody have anything before 5.04?
Committee appointments constitute either ad hoc committees or standing committees. And it's my understanding from the bylaws that the only standing committee is the Budget and Strategic Planning Committee. However, we have a Public Benefits Subcommittee that, my understanding is appointed by the chair of this body. But it's not really clear if it's an ongoing thing, or if it's just an...
Well, the language is, without limitation, one of the standing subcommittees is the Budget and Strategic Planning Subcommittee. So by virtue of that, it seems to me that you can have more standing subcommittees than than just this. That phrase, when it begins without limitation, means that, in point of fact, you can have Although the bylaws, and this is what we spoke to when I began, is this idea of autonomy. It says that there needs to be a Budget and Strategic Planning Subcommittee, but there can be more, and as an ECAC, as an advisory committee, you might choose to have more. Not sure, does that answer the issue, or not completely?
No.
So I'm moving on to 5.04. Again, coming back to issues before the committee, because I want to make sure that everybody has a sense of what we should be looking at, and this is it in a paragraph. Issues to be brought to the committee shall include budget and budget amendment issues, strategic planning issues, policy issues to the extent they affect the Energy Department, and energy rate structure issues. That's what the bylaws provide us, and that's what we're working from. To the extent there were a change, either to expand it or to narrow it, it would have to be approved by the Board of Directors. And then 5.07 is my next reference, and again, this comes back to what I had made prior reference to, that the board is receiving minutes, and that's how they're keeping tabs on what's, on the activities that are happening here. And the minutes are actually relatively detailed, and go into some detail as to the discussion going back and forth. And then what it asks too, and I'm not, not being here before, I don't know, you know, how close we follow some of these instructions, but it does say that they, the committee provides its position in writing, and to the extent a minority chooses to provide its view, a minority view is stated too. That really, to me, is where the rubber hits the road. That's why the board's asked us to be here, that's why the board has formed this group, is to report back on these issues. So, and I get it, that sometimes the business of the IID is moving, and it's moving real fast, and what we need to do is we need to develop work plans, procedures, or whatnot, in order to make sure that we have the time it takes in order to make that happen. So 5.07, to me, is that significant, that it requires us, you know, put a checkbox by it, and understand that as between 5.04 and 5.07, that's the charge of the ECAC. 5.08 talks about amending bylaws, and the fact that it needs to be approved by the board. And 5.11 comes, 5.11 comes back to where it says, no actions expressing the committee opinions will be presented by the committee unless approved by the IID Board of Directors. And I don't mean to keep harping on that, except to say this is a collaborative process. So no, it's not something that we want from an institutional standpoint for the IID to come out with a position, only to have the paper tell us that our advisory committees tell us that we're all wrong, or that we're doing something wrong. This is a vetting process, and just like I compared this committee to my work, there is going to come many, many times where the board goes a direction I would prefer them not go, at least as it relates to areas where they have their discretion. That does not give me the right to go out and state my personal opinions on those issues. And so too, we do the best we can as an advisory board at the ECAC to provide the IID with guidance, and then we turn it loose to the board, and hope, hope for the best. Reminds me a little bit like having kids. You do the best you can to get them to where they're supposed to go, and then hold on tight.
Look at the last statement in 5.07, something we haven't done in 5.07, it's a minority opinion here.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's 5.07.
Mr. Stills was just observing that point at the last line of 5.07. Reports to the IID Board shall include a minority report at the request of any member voting in the minority. So again, that's to me is a powerful tool, and one that's very important, given the makeup of our constituency, so that we make sure not only to report back on, okay, who won and who didn't win, was it up or down, just to make sure that they get a full flavor for all the views that were presented. It's critical, obviously, if the vote's 11 to 9, that the minority view is spoken for. So, thank you, Mr. Stills. Appreciate that. And the next section was to be rules of order, and I think that we've covered...
Before we go on?
Please.
Can we hear, I'm on the mic. Under 5.07, Committee Minutes and Communications, Mr. Hernandez talked about various committees that we have. Can we, or I don't know how to present this, is there a way to have the committee members for each committee be listed somewhat in our notes, so that if I want to go to a budgetary committee member to discuss the budget with them, I would know who to go to, and/or for the...
Public Benefits?
Public Benefits.
Public Benefits, sure.
Or the T-shirt committee, or whatever committee it is, so I would know who to go to. Could that be added into our notes somehow?
Yeah, we can, we can work with Ros, somebody had to have that added to our informational items, to always have that in the front of our minds. We don't need any formality to do that, we can just make a habit of doing that.
Thank you, Loopy.
Yeah, and I think that you'll find, I mean, I want, everybody's done a nice job of putting stuff out there, and I appreciate, I think that any of those kinds of requests, ask Ros and Maria, and say, you know, can we get a copy of this, or can we get a copy of that? And sometimes we can get it, and sometimes we can't, we'll do our best, that kind of a request, clearly, there needs to be collaboration amongst the committee. And so sure, you should have ready access to not only the members who are on those individual committees, but their contact information and whatnot for that purpose. Again, we've talked about the board, the governance process, the government policy which we had, which is really, that takes us to the end of Part 4. And that also tackles the supplemental agenda as well, where we talked about mission, purpose, bylaws, rules of order and such. Is there, are there any, before we move on to sort of some of the ethics things, some of which we'll review what we've already talked about, but is there any questions with where we stand right now? Please, Mr. Perrin.
Do we have any questions in La Quinta, on the presentation thus far? Okay, Vice Chair Gomez, do you have any questions there?
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Bettis?
The governance process, is this part of the, part of the, our bylaws? Has it become part of a bylaws now?
It's incorporated by reference.
Where?
It's at 5.09, is it? No. Let me make sure before I...
3.09.
Meeting shall be governed by IID Board of Directors' Governance Manual, Policy G8, Rules of Order for Board, in so much as the rules are not inconsistent with or in conflict with the bylaws. Okay. Yeah.
Any further questions in Imperial County? Vice Chair Gomez?
No, no additional questions. Thank you.
Okay, hearing no further questions on the first part, we're going to move on to item number 5, Ethics, Transparency, and the Law in Public Service.
I wanted to start with a story, so indulge me on that. Once there was a, yeah, here it comes, right. Once there was a kingdom, and the ruler of that kingdom was a, had no successor in his family to take the throne. So the king came up with this idea of a contest, in order to find his successor. So what the king ended up doing is he gave seeds to all the young men in the kingdom, and invited them to go out, grow the seeds, and bring them back. And based upon what the results of that exercise was, he would determine who would be his successor, who would be king. And one of the young men in the kingdom took his seeds and planted them in a pot, and watered them routinely, and nothing grew. Just a pot, and there was just the dirt, and nothing happened. And the deadline came, and it was time for him to take the proceeds of his work, which was just a pot with dirt in it, to town to be judged. And so he took his pot, and as he was coming into town and got closer, he saw, he saw just rows and rows of young men carrying beautiful flowers, and greenery, and huge plants and things. And of course, he has his pot, and he's walking in and standing in line with everybody else, and everybody's laughing at him and snickering. And so the king walks down the row, and looking at all these grand plants, and comes across this man with, this young man without any, without any plants, and he says, how dare you bring this to me? And the young man said, I did as you instructed, and I'm here to present it to you. And the king turned and announced to everyone that he had selected his successor, and it was the boy with no plant in his pot. And the king explained his decision by saying that, in point of fact, none of the seeds were capable of growth. They're all barren seeds. And this was the only honest young man in his entire kingdom, which is why he was selected to rule. The reason why I like that story is just that you'd like to think that if you do the right thing, that good things come of it. But the other thing about that story to me, especially when we start going into the field of ethics, is this idea that sometimes it won't be easy, and sometimes you'll stand alone. Sometimes it'll be embarrassing, sometimes people will laugh, but that's the nature of ethics, is doing right, not because you have to, but because it is right. I know that that's sort of the silliness of illegal ethics, and we've all heard that But that's the nature of our presentation. It's not silly to me, I'm a professor of ethics, and I've done a fair amount of work in that field. I mean, once you accept the fact that it's out there, it's almost like, well, it's citizenship. What do we do in our lives that we don't have to do? Well, all of you are good examples of that. You're here at the ECAC. Not everybody volunteers for these positions, not everybody is dedicated tonight to hear me talk about this subject. And ethics is similar to that in the sense that it's, it's something that we don't have to do, but we should do. I'm going to go forward one, because the point is in this slide right here, the relationship between ethics, transparency, and the law. That second point is, the law is the floor for ethical conduct, not the ceiling. And although we can talk about rules tonight, and through, by virtue of these slides, we will, that doesn't mean that that's what you should do, is to say that's the minimum. If you, if you don't, if you don't cross that threshold, then bad things could happen. But that doesn't mean that you have to be, live down to those rules and requirements. You can always try to achieve, the word, my favorite word is aspirational, you can always aspire to be better. The law is enforceable, while ethical principles are aspirational. The law is the floor, you'd like to think that you, that as a body, we could operate at a higher level than just the floor. That last line is something that is an unfortunate reality, but something that I think is worth observing, that we are in a political environment, and this perception is reality sometimes. So even though you could certainly justify your own conduct and say, well, I did it, I'm right because, I can point to this floor and point to this rule that I satisfied, the reality is, is if we can try to aspire to something higher than the minimum, then in a political environment, the perception of that is going to be greater, and more beneficial. then in a political environment, the perception of that is going to be greater, and more beneficial. Going back, we talked, these are the four things that we'll talk about over the course of this presentation. Principles of ethics, transparent government, eliminating self-interest, and fairness of due process. This may be the first PowerPoint presentation I've ever done, by the way. I've always said, I'll just, I'll never do a PowerPoint because I'll sit here and read it, but I don't want to read it. These are a number of precepts that we've put into these transparencies that talk in terms, that came from the Josephson Ethics Institute, that tie in conceptually to some of the requirements we'll talk about this evening. Public offices of trust, use it only to advance public interests, not personal gain. And those are the rules that relate to that ideal. This is another ideal, make decisions on the merits, free from partiality, prejudice, or conflicts of interest. Again, the rules are only going to do what they're, what they're capable of doing. They will draw these bright lines, and they will try to govern your conduct. But when it talks about principles of ethics, not principles of law, principles of ethics, these are aspirations. The laws are these bullet points below that are trying to enforce the ethical precept, all of which will come shortly. Government open, efficient, equitably, honorably, informed judgments. And those are the legal attempts to accomplish that objective. Honor and respect democratic principles, observe the letter and spirit of the law. And safeguard the public confidence and integrity of government by avoiding appearances of impropriety, that's a really important concept. Avoiding appearances of impropriety in conduct befitting a public official. Which is where you'll see, so you'll come, we'll come across rules that even if you comply with them, it still doesn't feel right, it still may not look right. But what the precept is trying to do is, we're trying to avoid the appearance of impropriety. In a political environment, it may be that we could say with great confidence, "Well, we've satisfied our legal requirements," but that may not be good enough in a political environment where appearances do matter, in point of fact. Well, these points are are what they are. Transparency builds confidence. I keep coming back to the idea of the political environment. Self-government, we're having, we are we are giving service to an elective jurisdiction, and as a consequence, transparency is vital. We're accountable, transparency builds external confidence. And too many secrets can result in instability to an organization. Transparency leads to better decision-making, and better, informed decision-making, and better decision-making, transparency leads to predictability. That why, that is why, of course, that provision of the bylaws of the ECAC requires that all these meetings be public, and that we get public feedback. And then those are the three items that lead, that sort of argue in favor of transparency. Businesses want to do, businesses want to do business with predictable entities, to the extent the IID would be predictable. Employees and stakeholders want predictability, and information gaps lead to the conspiracy theorists. Sometimes I, in my teaching, I get into this place where I make a big deal, and I rail about ethics, and what in law we call professional responsibility, and I do get this feedback as like, "Who cares?" But as that list leads to, as at least that list is intended to indicate, a lot of people care. And certainly, to the extent we fall below our floor, those last three items come into play. It may, these violations may actually result in action being taken against the agency, civil penalty, and criminal penalties. Talked a little bit about this before, and we find ourselves here again. This is going to be really critical as it relates to enforcement of the ethics rules. So, the first point is, it provides advice and recommendations, we saw that in the mission statement. The second one is sort of a derivative of that, assist in finding solutions to the problems within that, within our authority. And three, to provide opportunity for public to provide input, here, the consumers to provide input to the IID rules, policies, and programs. Now, one of the things that is important about that, but explains that, as we, as we talk about, I'm gonna move through some of these materials relatively quickly, and here's the reason why. We're talking about the Brown Act, we're talking about some of these conflict of interest rules. A lot of these apply to elected officials. And recusal and things like that. And as a result, they're the ones, the board members, the five members have to comply with every letter of the law here. Now, as, the ECAC as a group is not, not charged with making decisions on its own. Its charge is to give advice to the IID, IID being the decision-maker. And the reason why that is extremely relevant is that as the decision-maker, and you're affecting financial interests, that's where these rules come into play. If we're a step back, and we're only advising the board, we don't have the same rigor that applies to us as the board does. It does make some sense, we weren't elected to be here. So it's a different environment, however, this goes back to the very point at the beginning about, you know, operating under a higher standard, not necessarily the floor. So as we go through this, and we will move relatively quickly for that reason, but I want to cover the material, only because I want to say that we are allowed to comply with the rules, notwithstanding the fact that we may not be legally compelled to comply with the rules. Now, on this issue, and I want to, before we go on, let me just stop. Does everybody understand the difference between a public official and why we're here, you know, what are charges at the ECAC? Okay. Okay, understand your role and scope of responsibility, represent the community, rather than special interests, obviously. Provide a community, that's actually one of the topics we talked about earlier, about coming in and providing, representing, who do you represent, what are the interests you represent? Provide a communications link to the IID, follow rules, and bring your own experiences to the community for the, for the decision-making process. These are the limitations on advisory powers. And we can't, we can't spend IID money. Can't require staff to implement policy or programs. We don't have authority to investigate complaints of the staff. We can ask that items be placed on future agendas, if we follow the bylaws and go through those procedures. And we may recommend to the Board of Directors that the IID take a particular action. There's all of this, again, we've talked about that as we went through the bylaws. Please.
On that page, the limitations.
Yes.
But we can recommend those first three to the board.
Yes. Very much so. I mean, inherently, I mean, again, remember when I began through the beginning, because I, after I, here I go, "Limit, you can't do this, you can't do this," but I'm gonna give you autonomy. That's where the autonomy comes in. You're an advisory group to the Board of Directors. And so, in that capacity, you have autonomy. Advise them to how to spend their funds. Advise them how to implement their policies and their programs. And I think the ECAC historically has done a very good job of that. We've seen changes at the board level brought about by the ECAC this year. And that's what, that is exactly your charge. Investigate complaints of staff, but has to be on an advisory basis. And I offer that it also should be done as a committee. Vetted through this process. Okay. Sort of an observation, but I guess the second point is what I really am trying to make. Things that we say are privileged, absolutely privileged, it's sort of a First Amendment kind of an issue, so I should have saved that to the last slide, because I'm afraid you guys will say things about me now. But it's absolutely, you have the privilege to say whatever you want. Public agencies may not prohibit public criticism of policies, procedures, and programs and services of the agency, or the action or mission, civil limitation. And, and as it says, the Civil Code makes those statements absolutely privileged. In addition to, of course, the First Amendment. So, that gets us to, it's a natural segue, is to, from the First Amendment to the open and public meeting of the Brown Act. All meetings of the legislative body of a local agency shall be open in public, except as otherwise provided. And you'll see in bold print, though the operative terms are highlighted, meetings, legislative body, open to the public, and then there's exceptions, which we'll talk about, and there's the citation below. The Brown Act applies to legislative bodies. Wow, that was kind of cool how it did that. Just sort of fascinated with PowerPoint, sorry. What is a legislative body? It's a governing body of an agency, that's the Board of Directors. Subordinate boards and commissions created by formal action, that would be us. And standing committees with regular meeting schedules and continuing subject, so we are a legislative body. So the Brown Act, so far, we're good. What is not a legislative body, uh-oh, advisory committees composed solely of the members of the legislative body that are less than a quorum, okay, well, that's not us. Now, this is important. Elements, congregation of, this is a meeting, congregation of a majority of the legislative body, same place and time to hear, discuss, deliberate matter, subject matter, jurisdiction. So every meeting is a meeting. Is, did you pull away with that? Before we get to that, let me go back to that last slide. This one, the one thing, again, that we're advisory about. Let me tell you why we, we can look, go back to the bylaws, but save you having to go back to the bylaws. The Brown Act applies to us fundamentally, apart from all these requirements, it applies to the Boards of Director, but it applies to us as the ECAC by virtue of the rule, but really by virtue of the bylaws. If you've read the bylaws, there's a provision that's very specifically says, and the board says, instructs us, "We will operate by virtue of the Brown Act." So, as we go through here, we'll say, "Well, maybe this applies to us, maybe it doesn't," no, it applies to us by virtue of the bylaws. We'll always come back to the bylaws. So before, as we go through these different requirements, we go, "Well, hey, maybe we're not the Brown Act, maybe we could do whatever we want." The answer is, no, no, let's not go crazy. The board has given us instructions, just no harm in complying with the Brown Act. But the board has given us instructions by way of the bylaws for that. Serial meetings are illegal. What are serial meetings? Really, any meetings that are happening outside of the auspices of the public. Direct and indirect communication employed by a majority to develop a collective concurrence as to action taken. So you'll see this, let's keep focusing on the board right now, for purposes of the board, because the board is making these ultimate decisions. So you'll notice, if you see the public and the Board of Directors in places, you'll see one, you'll see two, but you're not supposed to see them in threes, subject to exceptions, because that takes them over a quorum, and then you're worried about whether they're actually taking action outside of a meeting, which is governed by the Brown Act. So that's what's happening here, is where you don't want to have a majority. Here, with us trying to be governed by the Brown Act, if I ever see 11 of you guys hanging out in a bar, I'll know that you're in violation of the Brown Act. I don't, I don't think that's gonna happen, but I'll be, I'll be keeping my eye out. Very unusual to see that kind of thing with a body of this size. However, if 11 of you are together, you better be complying with the Brown Act. You're more likely to see that, as I say, because of the Board of Directors. There's a smaller number, and if there's three of them together, we have Brown Act issues. Examples of serial meetings, again, with this, it makes a lot of sense seeing this a lot in the Board of Directors' senses. The hub and spoke, if you visualize an old-fashioned wheel, let's say, covered wagon with the hub and the spokes going away from the hub, that's what they're talking about, a hub and spoke. A meeting could be conducted not necessarily in real time, but by virtue of a single person making phone calls. And getting consensus outside of the public view, and that can't happen. That's called a hub and spoke, that's a serial meeting, that's illegal. Next example is a telephone or an email chain. My emails, when I write to the board, obviously, the things that I say to the board are an attorney speaking to the client, the board being the client. So it's protected by the attorney-client privilege. I always put in big bold letters, "Do not reply to this email," and this is why. Because if somebody's talking, and one person talks to the other five, all of a sudden, we've got a Brown Act violation. So don't ever, in fact, it's probably a good policy just never to hit "Reply All," because all sorts of harm can come from that. But certainly, on email, be careful about replying to "All" or replying to the group. Because then we're, then it has Brown Act overtures. Individual briefings are permitted. The board can speak amongst each other, just as you can speak amongst each other about very specific issues, as long as all the other rules are satisfied. But with every good rule, there are exceptions. What is a meeting not a meeting? Individual contacts, as we've already mentioned. Conferences and seminars. So, this Thursday, I believe, is it Thursday that the water, there's a water workshop? So you may see more than, more than a quorum of our directors at the water workshop on Thursday, because that's a conference or a seminar. Community meetings, whenever, the public kinds of events. Because you wouldn't expect them to be sitting at a back table, or if, I guess if you do see them at a back table, conferring and engaging in business, then you'd better break it up. Community meetings, another body or agency, if bodies meet together, this, that, an example of that, most recently, was when the MOU was signed between Imperial County and Imperial, and the IID up at the Salt and Sea. It was a joint meeting when another body or agency, social ceremonial, advanced and ad hoc committee meetings. Gender requirements, you folks are familiar with that, because you do get your agenda on at 72 hours in advance. And the element, that first element is that in a meeting context, you're not supposed to be discussing things that aren't otherwise on the agenda. There are some exceptions, of course, if that applies. Again, I'm not gonna go through the list, they're in the materials. I try to write them, and then you can always make reference to them, and saves us having to me to read in front of you. Public, these are public participation requirements, there's different elements of that. What you're allowed to do as a body is, you know, obviously, everybody has First Amendment rights to participate in meetings. And if anybody has had an opportunity, either by way of the videotapes that are online, or actually in participating live, to see the board meetings, the board has this three-minute rule for public comments. And what that rule is designed to do is to keep the meeting moving. We have a First Amendment right to speak publicly, and the Brown Act makes these public meetings. So we have to be careful about unduly infringing on those rights. Having said that, we also, as a public body, we need to be able to move forward. We have work to do, and we can't allow one person, we can't have the filibuster I was talking about earlier. We can't have one person take the entire meeting and us defer to their First Amendment rights while no work is getting done. And so that's what these are about, public participation. We're not, we can't require them to register and sign in. However, we are allowed to impose rules of decorum, time limits are okay. We can record people so that they're accountable for the things that they say. And they're allowed to speak on any item in the subject matter of that entity. You guys have that section at the very beginning of your meetings. We don't really have closed session here, because we are an advisory board, in that sense, everything that we say is going to the Board of Directors, so the things that are allowed in closed session, personnel matters. The ECAC should not be taking independent action on any personnel matters, they should not be actively engaged in labor negotiations. We talked about this in the context of the bylaws, and those very specific items that we are charged with. So you wouldn't see real property matters and decisions be made on real property- on real property matters in this context. Again, going back to Mr. Hernandez's sort of clarification, which I think is a good one, are you allowed to make, to give advice? Are you allowed to suggest things to the IID Board on all of these topics? Absolutely. But we wouldn't really have closed session meetings to touch on those, because those are outside of our subject matter, pending threat and litigation. And then, there's just different enforcement consequences. We'll go through that. No, we want to, don't want to take all night on some of these things. The conduct of meeting, quorum is required, that's, we saw that in our bylaws as well, the chairs preside, and rules of procedure, it says Roberts Rules of Order, but we put those in a special context, since we're operating by virtue of the Board's Governance Manual, and specifically, it's B8, I believe. Roberts Rules of Orders does not apply, but certainly, we've patterned off of Roberts Rules of Order informally. We're going to get into a little bit about managed meetings, and I'm going to move through this really quick, because I have to say that the meetings that I have seen, and I've sat through a few of the ones on video, have gone very well, and that's a tribute to the Chair of the ECAC. So goals of meeting management, balance participation, make meetings shorter, these are all important ideals. You folks have been engaging in meetings, so formal meetings, this is, a lot of this is in the auspices of the Chair, and she does a very nice job. These are all in the written materials, I apologize for not reading them, but it's timely. When the header says why meetings go on and on and on, I'm sensitive, in my presentation, to going on and on and on, I suppose. Audience problems, everybody has seen these, a lot of these are pretty intuitive. How do, what you're basically doing is how to run your meetings efficiently. Staff problems, agenda problems, and chair problems. I watched the last week when you tackled some difficult issues, I think it was, not, I guess it was last week, where you were focusing on the budget, which is a long road to hoe, but that meeting went extremely smooth, so a lot of this stuff has no application. And then here's tips for effective managing, effectively managing meetings, including public input. Dealing with disruptions. We do have disruptions on occasion, certainly at the IID level, and I suspect you have your share at the ECAC.
Let me ask you a question regarding...
Please.
They use speaker slips?
Okay.
Now, the Board of Directors, or we can't stop anybody from speaking just because they didn't sign in, they...
You can't have them register, but you can't use speaker slips to the extent you can order them and make, know what their names are and things like that.
Yeah, but if somebody wants over there, didn't sign in a slip, and he wants to talk...
Well, this, what I will say, Mr. Perez, is you're not required to use them, but this is a tool, so to the extent...
But I thought it was against the Brown Act.
The Brown Act is you can't have them register and give them information, but you can use speaker slips with only their names.
And keep them off.
Just to, just to have the, some sort of a sequence and some sort of an order. It may be a subtle distinction. Registration deals with asking more information, and it really is a form of intimidation.
My question is, just because they didn't fill out a slip, you can't keep them from ever speaking?
Well, that's true. I'm not sure that I would know what hypothetical you're talking about. It's like if...
Well, for example, I come in late, and I didn't get to make out a slip before that, and I hear something that I want to talk on, I wait till everybody finishes speaking, then I go up there and say, I want to say something. They can keep me from saying that.
It depends, let me just say this, and depending upon your hypothetical, Mr. Perez, there are circumstances where they could stop, where they could prevent you from doing so. And now, I can't, you know, there's different, there's still different variances of that hypothetical. So let me give you an example before we go on. If we've allocated a certain amount of time for public comment, okay, and at the very beginning, the Chair, the Chairwoman says, has everybody signed that we're starting the meeting, we're starting the public comment section, has everybody signed a slip? And then we go forward, and then at some point, somebody goes, oh, okay, I want to talk too. Can that person be prevented? And the answer is yes, because that is not stopping the content of their speech, that's just trying to control the meeting and the organization of the meeting.
Well, he can charge you from, he can bring civil action against you for preventing him from talking.
Not necessarily. I mean, to the extent, listen, it has to be content neutral. So your hypothetical, I think, was that somebody came in late? If somebody comes in late and we've moved on?
No, 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 I'm talking, they're still on the, the amount of time allowed is still available, still available.
Okay, yeah, I mean, if it's still public comment period, and someone wants to talk, and you, can you stay, no, we're not going to let you talk because you didn't sign the piece of paper. The answer is no, you can't put that kind of a restriction in. But I guess I want to, yeah, I just want to say that there are times where you would be able to prevent somebody on that basis, depending upon the circumstances. I don't want to, you know, make it too subtle, because it's all about organizing, organizing the meeting.
Yeah, but there's also a way of keeping people from talking.
Well, there's some truth to that, right. And if, there's no question, Mr. Perez, that if it is, if it is content or message-based, even if it's sort of, we found some sort of a subterfuge to make it work, then that's a violation. There's no question about that. Discouraged repetition, which is, I've repeated a few things, so it's probably not a good thing for me to be admonishing people about. Organize, I did want to talk about disruptions, because sometimes you have to recognize it when it's coming. It happens in meetings with some frequency. And so this idea, first of all, if the, you hope that the meeting is being run efficiently enough where these kinds of things don't, you know, we, even Mr. Perez and I were talking about different hypotheticals where it might come up, you know, to avoid, you know, there might be disruptions, if you can keep the agenda moving and keep it, you know, giving appropriate respect to speakers and allowing people to have their, you know, if it's three minutes, if it's five minutes, if it's 10 minutes, allowing people to have their voice and be, speak their mind. If you still can't avoid it, for whatever reason, this idea of a cooling off break and rise above it is really important. It might even make sense to adjourn the meeting for a period of 10 minutes, just to get, so often, people get upset in a political environment, and sometimes, just that cooling period can be very important. There's a whole procedure to eject people who are just unduly disruptive and clearing the room after consulting with counsel, but we, I can't see you folks getting into that kind of a situation. And as said, if you get into that situation, yes, do talk to counsel, because I do, I can help you on that. Due process. Now, we're moving on to another topic, and due process is, again, this is something, we're not making decisions at our level, we are an advisory panel. So I provide this in the idea of aspirations, as something that I, you know, we should be cognizant of, but you would never find yourself at this advisory committee level violating somebody's due process, because you're not necessarily making a decision. That decision is going to be passed on to the IID Board of Directors, and it's the IID Board of Directors that stands to violate due process. The flip side is, is do we want to allow due process to all of our constituents? Absolutely. So no person, everybody's familiar with the constitutional concept of due process. There's examples, what does due process mean? You have a reasonable notice to participate, an opportunity to be heard, and you have a right to be heard before an impartial decision maker. In our case, when we do have due process issues come up, the impartial decision maker is really the Board of Directors. They've been elected to take the actions that they have been, and because they're elected definitionally, at least ones that haven't, don't have conflicts of interest they're recusing themselves from, because they're in that position, they are the impartial decision maker for these purposes. Descriptions of notice, I want to get us out of here on time, reasonable opportunity to be heard, fair hearing, impartial decision maker. Again, we don't necessarily need to be moving, the materials, they're in the materials, if you'd like to review them, I encourage you to. But since that's not an ECA-specific issue, we can move through it. Okay, next is the Political Reform Act. This is where we run into our conflicts of interest Again, I've already admonished us to avoid repetition, but having said that, let me repeat, that because we're an advisory committee, we don't run into these issues as much. We are not going to be making decisions that are financially, that affect people financially, we'll be advising the Board, one way or another. But, again, not to dwell on it, from an ethical standpoint, just because the rules are nonenforceable against this committee and its members, that doesn't mean that they're not to be reckoned with, and I would encourage all of us to look, as we go through these topics, to say, you know what, I want to make sure that I disclaim, I have a personal interest in this matter, so I shouldn't be voting on it, and I should be announcing that, and I should be recusing myself from this particular discussion, even if it's not enforceable. So the Political Reform Act, what it does, is it focuses on two things, at the very beginning, these two bullet points offset each other. Number one, what it asks for is disclosure of your interests, presumably, the interests that you're going to have a conflict with, right? So it says, okay, here's disclosure of all of my interests, so that the public can police what I am and am not taking action on. The next is disqualification, to the extent any of the disclosed interests implicate me and the topic, then disqualification is implicated. The last two deal with campaign finance and gift limits, and I think that we probably won't even go that far, because I do want to talk about the disclosure and the disqualification elements. Form 700. I don't know how long you folks have been, the ones that have been on the committee before, have you done Form 700s before? Okay. I am not asking for Form 700s this year, and I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but I will say that the law doesn't, that the law doesn't require it, for the same reason that I've said before, since you're not making these ultimate decisions, and since the Board is the one making the decisions. This is something that I have rendered an opinion on, that is not required of you. So I am not going to circulate Form 700 for you to fill out. I think that in days past, and I can't speak to this, because I wasn't there, but I'm just, yes, sure I can, I'm not, nobody's here, I'll say what I want. Perhaps in days past, it was, the idea was, is that, well, no harm, no foul, better to over comply than under comply. Why not get Form 700? Because then we have it in case we need it. Well, that's just not the way the law works. It either applies or it doesn't apply, and I've already rendered the opinion that it doesn't apply, by virtue of the fact that, you may get frustrated, because you may say, well, you know, we never get to make the decisions, we never get to be in charge, we never get to have our own way. Well, here's the good news, we don't have to do Form 700s either. By virtue of the fact that we don't make that decision, we're not the ones that are going to be called on the carpet, we don't ultimately have that responsibility, this isn't. Now, for those of you who've never filled one out before, basically, what it is, is it asks for real estate holdings, it asks for business holdings, for late filings and failure to fly when it applies to you. There's some, you know, significant penalties. Here's the personal finance requirement that talks about may make, participate in making or attempt to use. Remember, we're talking about those two elements, disclosure and then disqualification. Form 700 is the disclosure prong, and then 87100 is the disqualification prong. No public official may make, participate in making, or in any way attempt to use his official position to influence a governmental decision, in which he knows or has reason to know he has a financial interest. And again, I think we talked about this, it's not a question of whether there's an actual conflict of interest or not. I am not going to go around the room, member by member, and then run to La Quinta and go around that room, member by member, and say, well, you have a conflict, you have a conflict, you have a conflict. It's not a question of whether you have a conflict under the Political Reform Act. The question is, do we want you to be in that position? If you have a piece of real estate that's impacted by your vote, are you capable of saying, you know what, I can do the right thing, even though it affects me, and even though my property will lose value by virtue of my vote, I'm still going to do the right thing because I'm ethical? Under the Political Reform Act, the answer is, well, no, you might be, and yeah, maybe you would act negatively towards yourself, but we're not wanting to put you in that position. The catchphrase is, avoiding the appearance of impropriety. Actions that seem right may still be illegal.
Well, let me ask you a question regarding that.
Sure, please.
The people in the Coachella Valley are all political appointees, and they represent a certain section of the valley, over there, a city or the county. Now, if they're members of our group, and there's an item that's putting in some infrastructure over there, they're going to push very, very hard to get it in there, or else. Now, isn't that a conflict of interest? Because if we could go around them through some other way, as opposed to going right through a certain city or a certain section of the county, then what?
Well, the answer is, you know, there's never an answer. This is a lawyer answering, so what does that mean, right? It's going to be a long answer, is the answer. No, seriously, the answer is this, as it relates to the Political Reform Act, and as it relates to the ECAC, there's no, there's no harm, because they're not making the ultimate decision. They, what the committee is doing is they're advising the IID. And so the IID, being the final arbiter, will be the one making the decision, so that's where we have to rely on the conflicts of interest to come out. Now, having said that, it's almost as if, at this level, as an advisory committee, Mr. Perez, that you might even want those conflicts. You might want those people that have some interest. I mean, I don't want everybody, if it has something specific to Coachella Valley, everybody in Coachella Valley goes, okay, well, I can't participate in Coachella Valley. Because in point of fact, at this level, advising the Board, we want to know how it impacts Coachella Valley disproportionately. And so by virtue of that, notwithstanding the conflict of interest, since ultimately, we're an advisory board, and they want to hear what we have to say, which is why we've put them on the Board, then yes, please, notwithstanding the conflict, you might disclose it. Well, yes, by the way, if you put in that high-power line, it's, you're going to have to condemn my property, and so I vote in favor of that, you know, might be somebody's view. We'd like, certainly like to think that at the, even at an ECAC level, that kind of a conflict would be disclosed, you know. I don't necessarily, you know, whether or not somebody would vote on it at an advisory level, I'm not offended by, and certainly would not be illegal, per se, because this isn't where the decision's being made. But living up to a higher standard of ethics, I'd like them certainly to disclose that.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Mr. Simmons, we have a couple of questions here in La Quinta. Go ahead, Mr. Garcia.
Eduardo Garcia, City of Coachella, political appointee. I wanted to ask, just for clarification, the members of the ECAC in Imperial County, are they appointed also by elected officials?
Yes, they are.
Okay. In terms of conflict of interest, Mr. Consigliere, I'm wondering if a simple response in relation to economic interests would be more of a clear explanation as it relates to a conflict of interest. I think Mr. Perez gives a good example, and certainly asks a good question. I think the committee members of Riverside County or here in La Quinta would probably, without a doubt, advocate for programs, resources for the communities in this part of the jurisdiction, as I'm assuming the Imperial Valley Committee members would do as well. But a simple explanation to a conflict of interest would not, wouldn't that just be if a member here or there of this body would have a direct economic benefit? That would be the conflict of interest, correct?
Are you asking...
That's a question to, yes, Mr. Consigliere.
Are you asking, in the context of the Political Reform Act, is that correct? I don't know that I'm prepared to speak.
Yeah, well, we are, we are going over the FPPC part of the presentation, and so yes, that's correct.
I think you can...
A conflict of interest.
So you're asking whether a conflict of interest only arises in the context of a personal financial relationship? Am I understanding that?
That is the question, yes.
I think it's broader than that. Yes.
Can you explain, please?
I don't know that I can explain. As it relates to the Political Reform... As it relates to the Political Reform Act itself, and the terms of the Political Reform Act, I want to say that your, your point may be correct in isolation, so let's just say that it is correct. I'm nervous about saying it categorically, only due to the possibility of common law conflicts of interest. So, perhaps I'm not answering your question correctly, so staying with the PRA, I think that you're correct.
Thank you. And again, I asked a question in the context of, as members here of this entire body, I would, I would hope and think that whether Imperial County representatives or Coachella Valley representatives would advocate on behalf of projects, programs, and services for the communities that they're representing. And so, I know that many times in this work, the word "conflict of interest" is thrown out very loosely, but it really doesn't apply, in my opinion, unless there is a direct economic benefit to the individual making a decision. And so, thank you for clarifying that, or to the degree that you have. I just wanted to touch on that very briefly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saleh.
When, when I was first asked to serve on this committee, part of the reason that I was told that this committee was formed was that the people in the Coachella Valley do not have any representation on the Imperial Irrigation Board of Directors, and this allowed people from the Coachella Valley to have some sort of, give some sort of input to the Board of Directors. I think that that in itself suffices as a reason that the people of the Coachella Valley who have been appointed to serve on this would be able to state what would be of benefit to the Coachella Valley. But I think ethically, what you're trying to perhaps get to here is that the benefit of IID is part of the equation, and the benefit of all rate holders all over the Imperial and Coachella Valleys. And if one area's interest makes it a hardship on another area, then that ought to be taken into consideration as well. But I don't think that decisions can be made on the basis of what's better for Imperial County over Coachella Valley or vice versa. It should be made as, as a whole. But to me, if we weren't allowed to state what would be good for the Coachella Valley, there would be really no reason for us to be on this advisory committee either, so...
Well, and I don't know if that necessarily calls for an answer, but let me answer, in any event, I agree with that comment. The answer is, is that, as I shared, this is an advisory committee, and the whole nature of the constituency of this committee is to represent your respective areas. And, and so, you know, to say that there's a conflict just by representing the area of, which is given the reason for you to be on this committee to begin with, I mean, inherently, that's not a conflict.
Thank you. That concludes the questions in La Quinta.
Okay. And speaking of this, this gets us back to that, what is a conflict of interest? And this is the test, the basic test for conflicts, and it relates to the financial element, which is what the question in La Quinta was. Is it reasonably foreseeable that a government decision will have a material financial effect on any of your personal economic interests? And then, it goes, we go through a list of what personal economic interests are, know what your interests that may be effective. Forgive me if I'm moving through this real fast. Again, I want to go back to the fact that these relate more to the Directors, but I want you to be sensitive to what the Directors are going through. We, all we are doing is advising, so certainly to the extent any of these types of interests come up in the context of your deliberation, I would encourage you to raise them.
Yes, Ms. Saleh.
I want to ask this question. If you own land and you sell that land to another person, and then later on are asked to vote on something that would affect that land that you sold, is that now considered your personal economic interest?
I'm not sure I understood that. Would you repeat the question, please?
If you have land and you sell the land to another individual, now that land belongs to another individual, and you, as a member of a council, are then asked to vote on something which would affect the land you just sold to somebody else, could that possibly be considered a conflict of interest? On the basis that that person might, for example, default on the purchase and have it go back to you?
I would say, I would answer that, yes. I would answer that, yes, to the extent it has a personal financial interest. It may not be a PRA issue, but it may be a conflict of interest elsewhere, and we're getting to the end of the hour, but I want to answer that question to say, yes, not only might it, in fact, influence financing, but it also might influence any warranty that you might have had on the property. So, yeah, as long as there's any sort of, I mean, a statute of limitations, I think all kinds of issues go into that question beyond the question as to whether or not there's a conflict of interest, but I would answer that question, yes.
That it would be a conflict of interest?
Everything's categorical. Everything's categorical. I'm saying it could be a conflict of interest. I mean, the...
Right, because would you, would consider this something you could reasonably expect to become a conflict of interest? To me, the answer is reasonably. In other words, wouldn't it be more reasonable to expect that the person would pay their bill and not, it would not, the land would not be returned to you, right? Or wrong?
Yeah, I just, you know, all of these, all these hypotheticals have a lot of variables, and so, I hesitate to say yes or no on all these things. That's the difficult, and again...
Okay, well, it was just something...
One of the, what the law is trying to do, we talked about those two prongs, is we want to maximize disclosure, and then we worry about disqualification once we've maximized the disclosure. They work in tandem. So, I think that in the best-case scenario is that you're disclosing something, you know, none of these rules require, getting back to the question, that it be disclosed all property that you've ever sold before, for instance. Having said that, from an ethical standpoint, to the extent an issue came before you that implicated an issue like that, ethically, as opposed to legally, would you want to disclose that? And I would say the answer would be yes. Anecdotally, I can't point you to authority that would require you to do that at penalty of law.
Okay, that, that's a good answer. Thank you.
Okay, and we're apparently close to the end of the hour, and so, what I'd like to do is I'd like to leave you with this, the role of the General Counsel's office. I could say this because I'm an interim General Counsel, so whoever follows me is stuck with whatever I say right now. The General Counsel's office can help, so contact him as early as possible as these issues arise. The General Counsel Office represents IID, which is important to remember. To the extent there are personal issues outside of the IID, then you shouldn't be, you know, if you're, if you're about to take action negative of the IID, and you share that with the General Counsel of the IID, that would be a mistake, only because the General Counsel represents the IID and not any of the constituents within it. It does take its, its authority from the Board, however, which is the last point. He or she does not represent you personally and cannot afford immunity. But we run into these issues with frequency in the public sector, and as a consequence, don't be afraid to raise them and deal with them, and be prepared to do the right thing when that time comes. I'd say that I could answer questions, but I don't know that I could answer them, and I don't know that we have time, but having said that, are there any questions? Okay, Madam Chairwoman, I send it back to you.
Okay. We have no questions in La Quinta. I guess I hear no questions in Imperial County, but we do have a supplemental agenda this evening. Did we still need to go into that, Mr. Simmons?
I think that we've covered those materials. That was the mission, I tried to cover that in the...
Mission and goals.
Yes, mission and purpose, and so, that was covered.
Okay, great. All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Simmons, for your presentation. I'm sure once we have an opportunity to go home and digest everything that you've shared with us this evening, that we will have some follow-up questions, but we appreciate your insight, your guidance, and the time that you spent with us this evening. So, we're going to move on to item number six and ask if any members have any comments at this time. Are there any comments in Imperial County?
No comments. Ms. Ramos-Watson?
Thank you. Are there any comments in La Quinta? Okay, I see no one here wanting to make a comment, but I did want to respond to some comments that were made earlier about the representation from the Riverside County Committee members, because we didn't touch on it when we went through our historical kind of timeline, in that we here in the Coachella Valley do not have the opportunity to vote for our Imperial Irrigation District Board of Directors, nor can any consumer here in Riverside County that is serviced by Imperial Irrigation District run for the Board of Directors in Imperial County, for Imperial Irrigation District. So, having said that, I think the intent behind having representatives from the different public agencies, the municipalities, and the county of Riverside was to make sure that we had an opportunity to have representation for our energy consumers in this area. And I know in my city specifically, we chose to have one elected and one management personnel because we felt that that gave a great cross-section of not only are we both consumers, because we both live in Imperial Irrigation District and are very happy with our service, but we are also representative, in my case, of 82,000 residents that have elected me three times to continue to represent them, not only here in Imperial Irrigation District Consumer Committee, but also, you know, in other various committees throughout the region. So, yeah, we're made a little different. We're not made just like, you know, the Imperial County representatives, but it's because we are different. We aren't part of the voting population for Imperial Irrigation District. So, I just wanted to make that clarification. There's no, you know, hidden agenda here, there's no special interests, even though we're municipal representatives, like I said, I represent 82,000 consumers, and that's what I keep in mind as I bring my ideas and concerns forward. And at the end of the day, the decisions that we make are for the betterment of Imperial Irrigation District, because if we have a strong, powerful, and ready Imperial Irrigation District to meet the needs of the consumers throughout the district, then that makes it all that much better for my city, my residents, and everyone in my political area. So, I just wanted to share that with you, and if there be no further comments, I want to thank everyone for taking time out of their special, you know, their busy days, and coming to this special meeting and sharing with us, and kind of going through some of these nuts and bolts that we haven't had an opportunity to go through since we've had new committee members. So, if there be no further business, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.